Call this committee of the whole meeting to order for May the second, twenty twenty-two. I would like to recognize that we're in treaty five line, traditional land of nature, which three nations and homeland is making, and we are all treaty people. Next, I would like to call for approval of the agenda. Anthony?
Yeah, we had a request to remove item nine point one, which is the next treaty of all meetings, the motions to remove.
That was, that was my request and now my item I put forth for discussion. So yeah, I'll move this.
Okay, I'm a second. I'm Councilwoman, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, just more.
Hi.
So can I now have an approval of the agenda as amended? Councilwoman, Councilwoman, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for the vote, community comments and feedback.
Well, I'm out of checks, way off speed. I have four questions tonight on the check register, the March check register. First one is zero zero three four two oh two, the red stat pack for twenty-one thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents. What is that for? Sorry, which one's zero zero three four two oh two? We're going to get the break over. And it's a next one. Okay, next one, zero zero three four one seven two, just stat tech in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Wondering what that is for? That's just a payment towards it? Okay, thanks. Okay, next one is zero zero three four one eight seven, Keisha Davis, in the amount of eleven thousand. Usually that amount per month is near half that, and I'm wondering why it's so much this month? Um, she, um, done both of them, it wasn't this month, it's been a couple of months. So it wasn't just for the month of March? Okay. Final one, zero zero three four two three zero, the colleague Smoke for eight hundred ninety-five dollars and five cents. What is that for?
We have a travel.
Traveling person, okay, thanks.
Any other comments, any feedback? Somebody is not on this one, uh, Councilwoman.
Can't hear the mayor.
Deputy Mayor Landmark, you have your hand up.
Oh, I just couldn't hear you before. I can hear you perfect all of a sudden.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the questions I'd like to ask, actually, to one is same number as the one mother chat asking about that zero zero three four one eight seven. So is that the last payment or is it the off number way? Because I believe you collected, you agreed to look into this payment.
The last payment will be as of March thirty-first, or sorry, May thirty-first.
So, so we.
Yeah, I won't discuss all those details, but.
So I'm taking care of.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My other question is zero zero three four one nine one is to Joe Johnson. Uh, he said rental, I thought we bought that vacuum truck, why is it the rental? I just confused about can, can some collision?
I believe it's because we delayed the purchases in that right, so we had to pay for rental for an extra month. Two months, okay.
We, we can't negotiate with them?
A part of the pricing that they gave at the time, you know, factored that in, when council decided not to proceed, then they, they charged for more. Unless there's something else that I didn't understand.
Councilwoman.
Did that go against the purchase price of the truck that we negotiated?
So, can I follow up? So is that mean, did they follow the, the offer at the end, that way your Google come? Is that for the, the tender and the offer, or it's not, it's totally different amount?
I don't have the details of that tender for me.
Yeah, which is every, the rental was several contenders, the tender was first set, that value that they responded to, so that was followed, and the rental was outside of that tender. But it, it first didn't happen until the first two months.
If we ever try to negotiate for that portion, or just give it to them?
At first stage, we negotiated with them. So I don't have to discuss that. We did have multiple conversations.
Parker, if you're ready, Councilwoman.
Uh, so now, I have a question with the back truck also.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I want to ask a couple of questions about standard. I would like to know how much we have paid on now? And how much do we owe? When are we going to get design?
Need to be careful, there's multiple stat techs. So there's stat tech architecture that's working on the pool. There's also stat tech that has worked on the wastewater plant. Then there'd be separate, a separate division as well, stat tech that is now working on the roads, I believe. Sorry, water, through the Water Services Board. So there'd be three separate divisions of stat tech that do different types of work for us.
So what is this one?
Which one are you referring to?
One sixty-three thousand.
That is for the pool design.
How much have they, we've taken so much so far on the pool design?
I don't have their progress to date, or is that just the check that's in front of us? They are at, I believe, sixty-six percent designs.
And damage?
I don't have that in front of me, so.
Well, I think this is the second time I asked this question. I have to, well.
Our CFO is getting it right now.
Why do you know such talk about this? Always in the dark.
Uh, yeah. Uh, yes, the approved amount for stat tech was nine hundred and twenty-two thousand and five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And that was approved by council, and today they spent most of all the years, seven forty twenty-five. They built, so we haven't built us since this announcement.
So I, in that, like I remember, this is the second bill?
Uh, but there's been, they've been, to be honest.
One time, when I asked before, the smoke, six thousand thousand. Then we pay. Now we just pay another six and three, three four design. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the, on it? Uh, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since Councilwoman Coburn mentioned about this sentence, I just spread my mind right now, but I kind of remember. We had the conversation about, at that time, we stopped everything until further discussion. So at that time, there was a, we were paid with three and a some thousand. Still had a lot of thing to go, but we did not come to a conclusion, we could continue for design until we get all the grant and all that in place, I believe that was a conversation, but somehow, why are we continuing paying that? That's the question I wanted to clarify this.
Yeah, without divulging, it was in a camera meeting, council provided direction to continue. That will be back in December.
If I would take a look at the, we can, the agenda, thank you.
Uh, I'm not sure which one had their hand up first, if you see. Okay, I will go to the last first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have the paperwork in front of me because I'm on Zoom, but if my memory serves me right, there was three checks written to the RCMP on this check register. My guess, my question is, why three? I thought we were paying quarterly, so I think they would have amounted to, the majority of the money would have been amounted to the RCMP from the six million on this register. So why are we having three checks for the one, one quarter?
Thank you.
Now, the previous quarters had some disputes in the billing, uh, but then those have subsequently been processed.
Okay.
Okay, Brayden, Councilman McMurdo?
Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. I, I, I don't know, I didn't hear it in the city manager's answer to Counselor Colburn's question about, um, if, if there is any info about when will we receive the design in full or in the next stage. Um, I, I heard him say it's two-thirds complete, just wondering if there's anything for the public in, in terms of when the design will be complete, thanks.
I believe the target is for the design to be completed, June or mid-June.
Okay. Okay, that was my understanding last as well, thanks.
We'll move on to development. At the monthly update, development and technical services.
Yes, good evening. My report is attached for information. Basically, it follows the same, as soon as past months, updating on the ISAP projects, updating on facilities, and updating on building permits. So I'm not gonna go through anything, it's there for information. Don't ask questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question, when I read your memo about the ISAP program for this year.
Yeah.
And Nelson wrote portion of, is any reason why only portion and not the whole thing? Same as the Wolf Street? Is any reason that I, I don't understand that?
Yeah, uh, previous portions of Wolf were done in recent years. Uh, and I believe the same thing for Nelson, because we're off the check Nelson, but there were previous stretches of Wolf that were done within the last, uh, almost five years, according to my engineering officials.
Maybe, right. Uh, my second question, Madam Mayor. The water, uh, you, so from what I understand, we already have contract to line up with that job this summer?
Yeah.
When is this approved from, from us? I didn't remember.
This, this was part of the eight million dollar approval through Water, National Water Services Board in December or January?
This is from last year project?
I can clarify, we don't actually award the work to the contractor. Because city engaged the services of the Water Services Board, they then subcontract, contract. So it doesn't come to council for approval, once you engage Water Services Board to run the project, they take care of all of it.
Okay. Because to me, like, okay, when this happened, I think.
No, they.
It is something.
They take care of all that now moving forward.
So no longer need the council to approve for that, that, uh, water job anymore?
Um, in future years, every year, you will have to budget accordingly to provide the city share, but really, it's, it's Water Services Board taking care of all the work on behalf of council.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Next, we're going to go to five point three, marriage report. Following is marriage report from April fifth to May second. Mayor and council held a consultation with the RCMP on April fifth. Along with City Manager Anthony McGinnis, we attended the virtual AMM Cities Caucus to meet with the Justice Copey on April sixth. Uh, attended the twenty twenty-two Manitoba Budget Speech and met with Ministers Gordon, Gilmard, Clark, and Gerson in April, on, on April twelfth. I also met with Minister Fielding on April thirteenth. I participated in a virtual meeting with John Morris at the Mining Association on April fourteenth, while I was still in Winnipeg. Along with Councilors Ellsworth, McMurdo, Valentino, and Wong, as well as City Manager Anthony McGinnis, we attended the AMM Education Workshop. And myself and City Manager Anthony McGinnis attended the AMM Mayor's Reefs and CAO's meeting in Bradford on April nineteenth. I gave virtual, uh, welcome remarks at the Truth and Reconciliation Gathering, honoring the children with Councilors McMurdo, Ellsworth, and Battle. Well, I give, pardon me, I give greetings at that, and then Councilors McMurdo, Ellsworth, Valentino, Wong, City Manager Anthony McGinnis, and we met with municipal officers in Bradford on April the twentieth. That's basically. Here's the second page. So he's busy, okay. Yes. I chaired the AMM Cities Caucus meeting with Municipal Relations Minister Eileen Park, uh, as a guest on April twentieth in Bradford. Along with Councilors Ellsworth, McMurdo, Valentino, and Wong, as well as City Manager Anthony McGinnis. We attended the AMM Spring Convention in Bradford, April twentieth, twenty-first. Along with Councilor McMurdo and City Manager Anthony McGinnis, we attended the Women in Government Breakfast on April twenty-first, where Councilor Valentino was a panelist. We attended the Northern Health Region and Ditchers Partners Conference Call on April twenty-second. That's been an ongoing call that I've been included in since the beginning of COVID. Mayor and council, as well as administration, hosted the city school liaison meeting with the school district, Ministry Lake, Board of Trustees, and administration on April the twenty-seventh. And Mayor and council, along with City Manager Anthony McGinnis, met with the Thompson Chamber of Commerce on April the twenty-eighth. That's the end, my report, thank you. Seeing that. My paper's cut off, I believe that is Cooper.
No, that's just personal.
There is. My thing is, yeah. Um, oh, excuse me, I just went back to my. Correspondence. Six point one is a letter from Eileen Park, uh, of Municipal Affairs. Anthony, you'd like to highlight that?
Yeah, the, the letter is attached for council review, uh, just some of the highlights of the letter. It's dated April twelfth from Minister Eileen Clark, Minister of Misrelations. Um, it outlines that basket funding remains frozen in twenty sixteen levels. So the, the levels of all the funding across the province from this counties will remain at the twenty sixteen levels. With respect to infrastructure investment, uh, they announced increases in funding of about five million dollars for the Manitoba Water Services Board, which is something that the city of Thompson has logged for in the past, and has benefited from. In building its sustainable communities, the province has doubled the amount of building sustainable communities fund grants. Um, and the fund is now annually up to twenty-five billion dollars. Though at AMM, they noted to us that they receive about forty million dollars of applications every year. They've also announced an increased funding to Green Team for summer students. About about, I believe, two million dollars. Um, and the city of Thompson will be receiving students this summer through that program. They announced that their municipal service delivery improvement program, which the city of Thompson applied for last year, uh, which was not successful on that particular grant. They'll be maintaining that again for this twenty-two, this year, twenty twenty-two. Um, just at a high level, that is, that is what is attached, and there's a municipal funding breakdown at the back.
Thank you. Councilman McMurdo?
Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. First, I think Counselor Ellsworth, you may be unmuted again. But there was a couple of things in there that I wanted to ask about, uh, in terms of grants. There's a fire service grant, and I know Counselor Fountain's not here, but that's, that's something that I think he's passionate about, and it, it makes some sense. Given our location and the risk of forest fires. As well as the municipal service delivery improvement program, I, I don't think we qualified on our last application. I was wondering if we will be resubmitting, as well as there was some, uh, I think twenty million for municipalities and aid for their transit system. So just wondering if administration had any info, if we were resubmitting or in line to receive any of that funding.
Um, with respect to the municipal, our Manitoba Fire Service Grant, I would have to follow up the department to see. I know the city does benefit with a number of training programs, so it could be under the purview of that program, but that could be something separate. So I have to follow up, check on that. The Municipal Service Delivery Improvement Program, yes, that's something that the city would apply for again, um, which would benefit, uh, some councils, other strategic plans in that, in that particular area. Miss, sorry, Counselor, what was your third question?
Um, it was the, the twenty million plus that, uh, the province has allocated to help municipalities and their transit systems, I believe, still, um, due to the impacts of COVID.
Um, I would have to look into that one further, though I think the live share that is typically for the city of Winnipeg. But we can look into that further.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I read that letter twice, I seen clearly there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, for community safety officers. Other than that, it really didn't say how much the city of Thompson was going to get with all the money that's being spent. So I certainly would be interested in knowing what applies to us. I think as I read the letter, basically says northern, what does that mean? Not sure, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I, reading that, we'll definitely be applying for ASAMGOWs grants, uh, as we do every year. Next, we're going to move on to finance, was a letter from the Public Utilities Board regards to the city of Thompson, water and wastewater utility. Taking this one, Jenny?
We'll go to Jenny.
I'm sure, so the, the public station was put in November twenty, twenty. Um, so just received the, uh, that it's, uh, a reason for the first. And maybe effective July at first, so the, the current rate exists until that time, and then July first, because there is a coming effect on the, the city council.
Any questions?
Councilwoman. I'm not sure, I'm learning this, that we, we look, you're making fun of it. What is the water rate increase?
You have the order number.
So the second document, the counselor has a outline of all the different specific orders. And just for clarity to our CFO, I believe we have to bring this for second or third reading?
A third reading.
Third reading, uh, future meeting of council.
So the radio, now this word is there, it says minimum quarter week charge, one hundred dollars and sixty cents. Awesome, minimum charge right now.
Yes, and ninety-two seventy-six.
So I'm in the, I saw, I mean, like, yeah. So I'm going up eight dollars and four cents a month, a quarter. Is that correct?
Ninety-two seventy-six.
Okay, good, yeah. Is it, the seven dollars and eight percent? Going up?
Seven twenty-four.
So that's about seven percent? We're going up? Six percent? You know, I don't know if you're going to bring this forward for an increase, but one thing for sure, I will not support the six percent increase. The tax on this. Right? So if you want to bring it forward, I will not, we won't for an increase. Thank you.
Anthony, you want some explanation?
Um, this has already been in front of council twice, um, and it requires the third reading now. So the rates do in the end have to be plowed, approved by the pub, then we'll have to come back for a third reading here. This is all part of the rate study that council approved to be set toward, to the pub, to get the rates put in place. As the utility has to have the balanced budget, and have to pay for its upcoming ISAP projects.
No, don't matter. I will not support any increase in water this year. I will, my fellow counselors, stand up and say the same thing, because we're getting taxed too much. We've been funded every year we've been here, we put it off. Put it off every year, and it's going to stop. And I think being this our last year in council, I think it's time to stop. And what we want, not vote for any increase in water. Status of every needs, and this one council needs in March. And the only one before that was way back when, that we said that water was discussed, and all of a sudden, we're putting six percent increase on our taxpayers' under, so many bills? Not right now. Not right, so I will not, I'll, I'll go against, even putting against, but moving forward with the council.
This is basically based on our usage of what it is, and it actually goes to Public Utilities Board, and they determine whether we grant and we increase, it's the same as mantle with hyper rates and that, it all has to go.
Yes, but why can't we go to Public Utilities Board and ask, say, we want status quo this year, we want an increase. Can we do that?
They base it on the money that is spent from the utility on the things that, that it pays for?
So you're telling me if we spend more money, then they're going to put the bill up more. The more we spend, the more the bill is going to go up. That's what you're telling me here.
The utility has to pay for itself.
I know, but if you're, if you're keeping increasing the utility, then the bills are going to keep going up. We need a control on the spending. That's what we need.
Anthony?
We've inherited now the wastewater plant, so the cost of the wastewater plant, added new costs that we didn't have before. There's also changes to chemical costs and those sorts of things that we don't control. So as those costs go up, we have to balance the budget to account those.
There, there's lots of other ways to balance a budget and put taxes on it. That's the easy way. That's the easy way, people. And, and, and I think we've been taken this way for too long. We've got to stop the rise, the cost to our taxpayers in this town, and it seems like every year it go up, it go up, they don't stay the same, they go up, they don't go down, they go up.
Okay, this is just a message that we're giving from the utilities, thank you, sir.
Well, I'm, this is a message to me, too, saying that this council should have more respect for their taxpayers and try to help them. As a message to me, to a deep of Thompson, say, when is it going to stop? Who's going to back me in trying to stop this?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I need a clarification for a few things here. The block water sales, is that one cubic meter for the price? So it really doesn't make sense to me, because I have to pay hundred, hundred dollars, uh, one hundred and six, sixty cents to earn the fourteen cubic meter, when you do the math, it's only cost me fifty something, but I have to carry my water to my home, I get that part. Second thing, uh, I, I think basically what Counselor Cohen is arguing about, uh, the expend, expenditure. Public, you three board doesn't care about auditing the account, all they care about is like, if you can provide the expenditure, that's what they're based on to give us approval. So I also want to caution, the, this year is an election year, I think it's not a good time to increase from what, five dollars a cubic meter now, I think it's a very bad time to do it, and also, we did not do a lot of, uh, due diligence for this, uh, water utility, because a lot of time, it's a water break, you let the water run for a month to, 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 uh, five, six weeks before we tackle that water break. So those kind of things, we can, we can, we can look into it to fix it. Until then, there's a lot of ways, I, I agree, there's a lot of ways on that part, chemical part, I get it, and also right now, just for the, uh, And also right now, just for the wastewater treatment plant, there's some malfunction going on. And you can see the check register, we've been paying twenty seven thousand a month just for hauling some stuff out of there. So those are unforeseen extra costs, so eventually we'll come to here again. So until we get all that fixed, I believe this will be continued going on. And anyway, I think that will be my comment for now, and that's some of the council that I've been trying to speak on that, thank you.
Thank you, and this wasn't just brought forward as an election year, as you look, this this was put forward in November twentieth of twenty twenty two yet. The the rates and that, our information was all into the government, just took that home. Councillor, Councillor McMurdo.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. I I I agree with the previous councillors to an extent, I guess. I I think it, yeah, it's painful to levy an increase of this magnitude. It's, it was painful to wait a year plus for the approval and then I guess it's kind of painful to to debate this again, because it's been so long, like it's a new item of business. I I agree with councillor Wong that we need to address our water breaks as quickly as possible and demonstrate that to the work we're doing, we are trying to mitigate these expenses and increases as best we can. For administration, I just would ask though for clarification. This increase in the utility rates, will they be helping to fund our our ISIP program for our water and sewer renewal over the coming years?
I believe that there's a portion of that is specifically for capital, and that's to provide the matches to fund our our portions of the ISIP projects.
Okay, yeah, that that was my understanding that at least a portion was, and I guess if there's any silver lining for our residents, it's that that work is is coming and hopefully there's a realization of of savings with an improved infrastructure basis in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Hammer.
I was just going to remind people of that, that when we sent this to pub, that was part of the the goal, is if we make those upgrades to our infrastructure, our costs should come down because we're dealing with newer pipe rather than the pipe that was installed in the city in the nineteen fifties and sixties. Hopefully it brings down the number of water breaks that our public works has to deal with. Things do go up, we still have to make those repairs and breaks, we have increased costs in chemicals. And if in just fixing brakes. That's part of the part of the issue and part of the reason why this went to pub, and it's sad that it took that long to get it. Now we're talking about it like it was, it's a brand new thing, we we discussed this at length two years ago before it ever went. Anyway, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Councillor Prer.
Just a quick question, what is the quarterly service charge? Is that a tail and what's the difference from previous to now?
I was the group they, and maybe it's it's all the rates that are set up there, they're set up by the utilities board, so they have their, they have a rate structure that's, I mean, other numbers are too, so it's really the, the end I think, so the set up the utility clerk, the manager of the apartment, and those types of things, they're not going to have to directly related to either the distribution of water or the question of the waste. So those, maybe those like system that like I said, like the twenty first. Any positions that aren't directly related to the water.
Thanks.
Answer your question.
Oh, we're sorry, there was a second part, I'm just wondering if there was any increase in that.
Councillor Elsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there is no unquestioned the fact that we certainly applied to the pub, I don't think it should be lost that whether it's a new system or old system, if you do not control the fact of your expenses and in our regards as to the water breaks, and yes, there'll be less water breaks, but there's going to be water breaks. And when they're running for weeks and months at hand, that is a cost, you're 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 sending back chlorinated water to your water treatment plant, down the river, back again, over and over. When you add a new wastewater treatment plant that we spend, as other councillors have talked about, I would say we must be well up to hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars now because of problems running that plant. So we need to fix that. Whether we increase the, with the public rates or not, that that's one thing, but we also got to get control of the expense because the more the expense goes up, councillor Coleman is right, so is the income that you need coming in. So I think we really need to have a look at why we are having to wait such a long time to get those water breaks fixed, and and if someone is going to tell me it's because we need parts and all of this, we know we have water breaks, we should be ordering a whole lot more parts, not one or two, if that's the case. And we certainly need to get that wastewater treatment plant fixed, I know we're working on it. But we will never be able to control the costs if we don't address what the issues are. So I'm really concerned about that, thank you.
Thank you.
Couple more questions here. So the following revenue requirement projection, we're used to job rate to prepare those rates. Is that the total money we got coming, they're coming in, or is that what the cost is? Six million is almost seven million, that's the cost, right, total revenue general? It pays twelve. Into the, there's costs and there's revenue here, right, but the six million plus the bit, what is that, is that our expense? It's four million for net revenue required for water, is that what we need this year to come in? These twelve.
I guess, but the four million would have been what was basically probably played in that. And then the two million would have been what was used to.
So this is what you're projecting as revenue for us or cost?
The four billion for water, we can definitely, and the two million for recent costs. Because there's also additional revenues that are raised as well, so you're bringing from the natural customer, which is probably, you know, pretty expensive, which is much money. That's involved by the hydro.
So how much revenue we got coming, you know, give me a ballpark figure. That's what's projected in there, what did we bring in the last fiscal year? I think it was eight million. Remember correctly. Right? So we're bringing, we, okay, we probably need one here on the project from seven this year. Now, is this this input seven percent hike here?
Yes, we will put the.
So we need to bring in seven million dollars a year to cover our costs. And we got the revenue that we had, shows something to compare against. They're saying we need seven million this year, what do we have the last three, four years each year coming in as revenue? Now that's on the book somewhere. You know? We got nothing to compare to.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we have, does want a couple more questions before you bolt on this at next council meeting?
Well, my vote's made up anyhow, so if you want to bring it forward, bring it forward.
Other councillors, do we want to bring this forward to the next meeting, or do you have more questions? By show of hands, who wants to bring this forward to the next meeting?
All right.
We'll bring it forward to next meeting. In the meantime, if you have some specific questions, please direct them to our city manager.
Well, I asked this, and I want comparison over the last two years, what their projection of was bringing in and what coming. And that's what I want to see, the the end of the number that came in, and what they project to come. Like this, this one here.
I think Jenny's got that under control.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we'll move on to development. A memo from the Director of Development and Technical Services in regards to twenty twenty five, twenty twenty two zoning bylaw amendment from peers.
Yes, Stephen, so back to the February council approved an option for the purchase of land on Thompson Drive South. It's time to be developed into a security training center and office space for a local training company. In order to fit into the zone, we would need to add commercial school as a continual, as a conditional use to that zone, which is C M U. So commercial school is a defined use category. It is in other commercial zones, just not in this commercial zone. So this request is to put in front of council to do a zoning bylaw amendment to add commercial school as a conditional use to C M U.
Thank you, councillor McMurdo.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. I I don't have any objections to this, I think it represents development, a little bit of revenue to the city and some growth in training opportunities, so no, no objections on my behalf for this, and my apologies to everyone. My babysitter's here and I'm going to take off now to put my kid to bed. Everybody have a nice night, see you.
Okay, any other comments? I do have no issue with the change in the the plan, is there anybody else, anybody have concerns, councillor Wong?
Not a concern, I just want to understand what's M U set for, yeah? C M U.
C M U, commercial mixed use.
Mixed use, yeah.
Yeah, when the, exactly, when the bylaw was set up, the mixed use was supposed to allow for commercial on the floor, with potential for living upstairs or other uses, but this is a larger issue, I think we discussed, that the director of development is looking at about streamlining the zoning by law. Because there's so many different uses that it's difficult and sometimes it isn't logical why certain things are areas. So until that larger work is done, we have to put through this amendment to allow this business to.
I definitely agree with you, city manager, because there's so many zoning and purposes, like, okay, because Thompson built such a way, that is hard for us to do that, just so one zone for one reason and one one purpose, or multiple purpose. It's just stupid. Anyways, yes, definitely just.
Consent that we can move this forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Product, you have our permission to continue. Call for adjournment? Councillor Coleman, on favor?